All right, it's 5:36 on December, what are we, 12th tonight, 2024? I'm going to call the meeting room to order and our first item of business, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry I moved it because it was in the way of the walkway.
Yeah. All right, before we go any further and have any votes, we're going to get the three of us sworn in tonight, so I'm going to ask Judge Nesweg to come forward and the three of us to go up front. We'll do our duties.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Graham Morrell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Morton County Commissioner.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Morton County Commissioner.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Photographers?
Yeah.
Congratulations, had a great meeting. Thanks for having me.
All right, I will call the role for tonight, Commissioner Morrell.
Here.
Commissioner Tocash.
Present.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley.
Here.
And myself, Commissioner Bame. We also have Auditor Roan at the front desk, State's Attorney Copy, and Sheriff Kirkmire in the back of the room. Next will be the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of November 26, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the minutes.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the November 26, 2024 Morton County Commission Regular Meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting of November 26, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the minutes.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the November 26, 2024 Morton County Commission Regular Meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, monthly bills, Commissioner Tocash, we put them on to work right away and got them going, so.
Commissioners, I've approved or reviewed the bills for this month with the help of Chairman Bame, and I suggest that I move that we approve the monthly bills and the payroll.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the monthly bills and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. All right, we will move right into our first one. Um, it'd be number two on our agenda, Kim Ripple with the Bismann MPO.
Thank you, Chair Bame, Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having us here this evening. As already mentioned, my name is Kim Ripple. I am a transportation planner with the Bismarck Mandan Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the MPO. I'm here to introduce the MPO's consultant, Jason Carby of HDR, who's with us online tonight, and the Arrive 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. The Arrive 2050 is a major transportation planning document that assists the MPO, our local jurisdictions, and the North Dakota DOT in envisioning and preparing for the future of the local transportation network. More specifically, it helps the local municipalities use federal transportation dollars to improve the network through expansion or maintenance. We've been working on the project for about a year and a half now, and Jason's presentation will provide you with an outline of how we prepared for the study, how public input was used throughout, and what overarching goals, development themes, and grant projects we hope to pursue upon possible acceptance of this master plan. The Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission, at their meeting of November 20th, held a public hearing and then did recommend acceptance of the MTP. Tonight, the MPO is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Arrive 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan through a resolution of adoption, which was included as part of your packet. Jason or I would be happy to stand for any questions at the conclusion of his presentation, and with that, I will let Jason take it away.
All right, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Really great to be with you tonight. Um, I'm going to give you a very high-level overview of the document itself, kind of talk about what's in the document, and answer any questions that you have. It's a, I think Kim touched on this, it's a, you know, it's been an exhaustive, extensive process, been great working with the public and all of the, you know, technical staff with each jurisdiction, you know, including Natalie and John on your team there at Morton County. Um, and, you know, it's a hefty document, but I'm going to give you a very high-level version of it. So, there's 11 chapters, and we're kind of going to walk through the content of each of them very briefly. Um, so the Metropolitan Transportation Plan is one of the core documents that the MPO updates every five years. Um, it's really charged with looking out at least 20 years. We called it, you know, Arrive 2050. We're looking out through the year 2050, and really looking at all of the different transportation system needs, whether it's for driving, um, you know, for walking, biking, for freight movement, buses, um, you know, that's really what this plan is all about. It's also charged with creating a physically constrained or physically constrained project list, meaning the projects that make it into that final list are supposed to be reasonably fundable. Um, we went through a process of making sure that we were consistent with all of the federal requirements, but also really tailored this to be a local document, and kind of built that around a set of eight different goals. Um, the public engagement I touched on was pretty extensive. We had in-person and virtual web-based meetings on both sides of the river at three different milestones, you know, got input on some of the issues, what the plan really ought to address early on, and what some of our goals ought to be, and then really started digging into what some of the solutions might be, getting feedback from the public. We had different, again, online engagement, met with some stakeholders that, you know, represented various organizations, also, again, had a lot of technical staff kind of driving this plan from each of the five jurisdictions that make up the MPO, and so had a lot of, you know, feedback and help developing this plan. Um, had a chapter kind of that set that baseline for, you know, how the region has grown historically, the Bismarck Mandan, you know, Morton and Burley area has grown, also commuting patterns, all kinds of, you know, jobs, employment, those kinds of dynamics, kind of setting the stage for, you know, how the area continues to grow into the future. Um, you know, looked at a range of how the system operates, so how, you know, what are the safety issues, you know, where do we have congestion, freight flow, you know, bicycle and pedestrian connection issues. From a safety perspective, this is really one of the most important aspects we focus on through the planning process. We're really trying to limit and reduce and eventually eliminate serious injury and fatal crashes. And so, we really focus on not only the where of where these crashes were happening, but also, you know, how many, what are the trends, you know, how can we start maybe mitigating some of these crashes. Looked at congestion, you know, where are we starting to see pockets of congestion pop up? But also, as we look to the future, understanding that we've got some congestion today, as we can have that significant growth into the future, we anticipate more and more pockets of that congestion popping up. Um, you know, looked at a range of different perspectives here when we were really looking at system performance. Cross-area travel's always been one of those areas that, you know, as a region, we want to make sure it's easy to get kind of on some of those longer trips from across, you know, whether it's one of the cities, get across the counties, and so that was one of those real focus areas that we started to develop some solutions. We are anticipating the region's going to continue to grow. There's nothing to indicate that, you know, the recent growth that I know you all have seen won't continue, you know, into the future, into 2050. So, we're anticipating about 30% to 40% growth in population, households, and jobs, and so, you know, we can kind of see where we anticipate some of those new housing to grow, where we're anticipating some of those new jobs start emerging as well, and that really drove, you know, some of those future needs that we're really starting to anticipate. So, looking at, you know, how travel patterns kind of react to where that growth is anticipated. So, this really helped form not only, you know, what sort of projects and priorities do we need today, but what might we start needing to prepare for in the future. Um, so based on those issues for today and in the future, you know, kind of looked at all the different potential improvement approaches we could use and started really taking, you know, safety, you know, system preservation, traffic signals, new corridors and widening, things like that. Where does it make sense to kind of apply that based on what we've seen today and what we think we're going to see in the future? And so, came up with a rather long list of projects, you know, some of these were based on other studies that have been done, some of them were, you know, developed through this Metropolitan Transportation Plan, ideas from the public, ideas from, you know, technical staff. You can see, we've got a long list here, so a lot of these are really good ideas, and we're going to continue to keep them in the plan as an illustrative, we call it illustrative, or also as a vision plan, but not all of these are reasonably fundable, so they won't all make it into that physically constrained plan. But you can see, we've got, you know, opportunities for new interchanges, new connections, a new northern bridge crossing over the Missouri River, and also just focusing on, you know, maintaining the current roads we've got, and potentially, you know, some widening as well. Um, we did, again, this physically constrained, looked at funding and kind of saw a trend of, you know, the amount of money that we've got to spend on transportation is growing slower here at 2% than are what we've seen historically in cost inflation, and so in the transportation industry, we've tended to see about 4% per year growth. And so, our long-term purchasing power is going down, and so with that, you know, kind of is the backdrop, developed a plan with all of the, you know, all the priorities and the goals that we talked about, but also with the technical staffs of, you know, what can we put in this plan that's fundable, put it in the size of what we call in bite-sized chunks, but, you know, the sizes of projects that we can reasonably afford. And, you know, developed a range of potential new side paths and trails, roadway widening, a lot of kind of roadway rehabilitation where we were basically trying to keep pavement in a good state of condition, or state of good condition, and then did identify some safety projects as well. Um, and then the final chapter was really all about, you know, taking that local tailored plan, but kind of demonstrating how we were being consistent with federal and state requirements, and just making sure that we were, you know, checking all of the boxes in terms of what we needed to demonstrate there. Um, and with that, I will open it up for any questions you might have. Again, a high-level overview of a rather exhaustive planning process that was pretty comprehensive.
So, Commissioners, have any questions? So, our two planning and zoning portfolio holders, it was before you guys at your meeting, were there any concerns whatsoever that you guys come up with, or?
There was no questions at the P&amp;Z meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
There's nothing from Metropolitan Planning Organization either. This has all been good.
It's been good? Good.
Yes.
Okay.
I thought there was a motion here, so.
Okay. Working on a motion, so. Thank you, Jason. I don't think anybody has any questions for you.
Okay.
About to have something?
Yeah, I think I do.
Okay.
Unless there's anybody else.
Nope, nobody's got any, nobody's looking for questions, no.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the Arrive 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan and authorize the Chairman of the Morton County Commission to sign the resolution of adoption as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution and have the Chairman sign the Arrive 2050 Long Range Transportation Plan Resolution. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Kim and Jason get off a little easier tonight.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Uh, next we have Kyle with the Court Facility Grant application and Back the Blue funding.
And then a couple of other mentionables after that, but. Good evening, Chair and Commission. The first thing is that I want to bring up is that we're looking at the Court Facilities Grant. I asked the Auditor Roan if that was available, and it was, so the application was filled out. It was mainly filled out to replace one of the X-ray machines that is upstairs on the main floor coming into entrances, that due to, one, there's new technology out that's been here since 2016, um, so it's time to look at replacing that before it gets too outdated as we're going in, and start to have the issues as we go along here. So, it was put in, I did submit to get a quote from Auto Clear for that, for that particular machine to replace it, and the only difference is between, there's newer technology and there's also AI now that's available, that's also an option for these that I did put in for, that as it goes to an X-ray machine, AI will actually pick out objects, so if it's made of a plastic, as in a, like a ghost gun type of those things, that it would pick that up, pick up the shapes of those type of things that going through. So, it all is, I guess, intelligent to know what the shapes are of certain things as we go, along with chemicals and some explosives as well. So, this would be included into this machine with it. So, the total cost of that is around, what did I say? It's, well, 20, well, the total is $26,461. It's a 75-25 grant, so our cost would be $6,615.25 if we get that. Then, if we get it, my intention at this point would be to pull that funding out of asset forfeiture. So, my request is.
The 25%?
The 25%. Um, and if we get that approved, and since it's over the $5,000, then I would come back to the Commission, the asset forfeiture funding is there, but then we'd come back and ask for that funding for our 25%. But I know it has to get approved first and go through the process, and that's usually the beginning of February, I think, is when we normally find out if we get approved forward or not, and then we would move forward for that. So, my request is just to approve for Chairman Bame to sign the application and submit it.
Commissioners, have any questions for Kyle?
Mr. Chairman, I'd guess it'd be more asset forfeiture funds also go with the State's Attorney's Office. Anything the State's Attorney would want to add?
Chairman, Commissioner Zachmeyer, there's two separate funds. The sheriff has one, and the State's Attorney has one. They're separate funds.
Right, but it's the courthouse. So, it's just, can we use both funds?
If Kyle had his asset forfeiture, or not of his state's, he would.
Yeah, I'd pull it out of my asset forfeiture, that's correct.
So, say he's, we forfeit a $10,000 here. I don't know what the exact percentage is, but our percent goes into our accounts, theirs goes into theirs, and so we can actually prove there, there's a percent that's out of theirs.
But for the matching funds, would the State's Attorney's Office be able to help on their portion of it?
I would have to double that to, as far as anticipating using of our funding for this here, but.
So, why would, security is in the sheriff's realm.
But State's Attorney's Office has also got control over some of these funds. Now, I'm just looking at, is there another portion that can be used, but that's fine.
Any other questions?
The question I have, the funding is there for it in asset forfeiture if we get the grant and get that far.
Okay.
Chairman, I'm trying to just look up, just to give you FYI, what the balances are on the two, but our system's really slow today, so it's coming.
It's been slow all week, it's cold.
It's because she's attaching tax statements into the parcels.
See, ours should be somewhere around $70,000, I do believe that's in there yet, no.
Plenty.
Plenty.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the sheriff to apply for the Court Facilities Improvement Grant Funds.
Second.
Okay, uh, hang on, right here. It's been moved and seconded to apply for the Court Facilities Grant Funds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Okay, thank you very much, and obviously, it's concerns with the security of the courthouse, with everybody involved, which is the court, and for those, all the people that use it for those, so that would be a good thing, upgrade at this point. So, next thing is on to discuss is the Back the Blue Grant. This, in 2023, the North Dakota Legislature approved, appropriated 3.5 million for Back the Blue Grants for law enforcement agencies and correctional officers in North Dakota. Of that amount, just to so you know, that there was 750,000 was for agencies, that was less than 10 officers, and then the rest of it was for departments or agencies that had more than 10 officers. So, and it was divided, so the state went through the, actually, the AG's office went through, how many officers there were in North Dakota, and that each agency had, and then the funding was divided amongst those. So, those funds, and it was approved for that 3.5 million, so the funds were dedicated for sheriffs to decide the best way to use the funding in their law enforcement agency, and the funds can be used for recruitment, for retention, and for tuition payment for training. The funds can be split between any of the uses and divided between law enforcement individuals and the way that best serves the agency, and the funds need to be dispersed by May 21st, sorry, March 21st of 2025. So, I've been kicking this around for a while on which way to do this, and because of retention, I decided on that, I think the best way to go about this because of the funds are there, and in North, and just to back up a bit, that because of the amount that was divided in the offices, sworn officers that we have, then we were awarded $51,097. So, that is the money, the Black the Blue Funds, Back the Blue Funds that was appropriated to us. So, out of that funding, my request is that I went through it and divided it up amongst all the individuals of the sheriff's office, which is 44 individuals, and based that on tenure that they have with the current agency. So, the only thing I included was the time with Morton County alone, not with, if they come from another agency or whatever, it was just Morton County. So, that's what I, and I come up with a base fee on that, and I just went through that base fee and come up with the amounts, which I do think that you have, I don't know if you have that or not, what the amounts are. So, they were divided up. The only thing I did not know when I did this is that.
We didn't get the amounts.
Okay, so, so what it was, was just a quick review. Since I based it on tenure and the amount of people that we had for the years of service, I based it on that. So, I started at, from zero to five was, this is the base salary, was 750, six to 10 was 1,000, 11 to 15 was 1,100, 16 to 20 was 1,200, 25, or 21 to 25 was 1,300, 26 to 30 was 1,400, 31 to 35 was 1,500, and 36 to 40 was 1,600, which we actually have one that's up there. So, that was the base salary, and then after that, I went through and what was left out of the remaining funds, I just divided it up amongst everybody else, again, to bring it up to the final. So, it was another $136 over that, and that's how I came up with the funding. The only thing I didn't know is that, when I was figuring this out, that you have to add FICA in there on top of that, you know, to begin with. So, then FICA was added on top of that, and then taxes will come out. So, the total, once you add the FICA funds in there, was 50, uh, I gotta get the right number here, $55,005.92. So, that would be my request, and I do believe, I was going to talk to Wendy when she was here real quick, but we'd have enough in salaries to cover that other $4,000.
Commissioner, or Chairman and Sheriff, I was just looking at your budget, and there's nothing left on salary line. Your salary line's actually already.
Used, okay.
It's already over before, I don't even know, this payroll probably isn't there, but it's over, so you have to, I mean, as long as you have other.
Yeah, we're still okay, I can cover it in other ways, yeah.
You said 136, and you had 44. You had 136 over.
$136.
For each one over, out of, for 44 of them.
Yep. So, no, it wasn't, no, it was $6,000 that was left, divided by 44, turned out to be $136 each, over what the base salary was, so.
So, you could, you could use that, 6,000 over, to pay that FICA.
Um, it's already figured in here, I could, but I can cover.
Yeah, you know where I'm going. I had a retention bonus at the state, and they give you this bonus, and then all of a sudden, it's not that amount because they took FICA out, and the state took retirement out too, well, yeah, I should have just moved on.
Well, and, you know, the Back the Blue is. Well, and you know, the, the Back the Blue is, is uh.
Yep.
It's, it's a good idea, but it's not, it's not nothing that can be long-term or is really gonna make a big difference in the long run.
No.
You know, as, as we go, not the way it was divided because it was, you know, it was started with 5 million and it was put 3.5 million and all correction officers were added in there, which is good, but, but that brings down the pot, you know, for, for everybody involved. So uh, I wanna make it, you know, there's uh, there's individuals that have been dedicated to Morton County for quite a few years and I wanna make sure that, that my goal is to uh, I guess, reward them uh for that loyalty and retention uh to the county with these uh, with this funding that is available.
Sheriff Kirk Meyer, I've got a question. Uh, first off, I, I support uh the idea of retention bonuses. Uh, second thing, and one of the reasons or one of the utilizations you can use here is for law enforcement retention. Now is that, is that specific to law enforcement officers or is that staff as well?
Uh, correct, it can be to, it's, was, it can be double, and I gave it to all staff because all staff make a difference.
Yep.
You know, uh, we wouldn't run very well without having the staff and, to be able to do that, so uh, my communications people, office staff, and all the sworn were included into this. And uh, and I wanna make sure that in, we can, from my understanding from this funding, it was divided up among how the sheriffs said, said it could fit their agency. This is, I think, is the best fit, that it, that it's fair for everybody. Uh, the fairest I could get for everybody that, to be able to do this and, and everybody is important, no matter what position that, that they hold, uh, to, to make sure this thing runs smoothly.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Yep. So that would be my request is just to uh, to I guess authorize the spending up to uh, uh, well, the 51,097 uh was the Back the Blue Funds plus the, the additional FICA, which brings it up to that 55,000. And uh, that can be covered out of the, the current budget. For payment here, I think, um, from my understanding from Wendy, it could be paid out uh next week on a separate check or payment however, get sent out.
So Don, if it's not the salary line, there's, we got other places we can pull it.
I, I see the, the FICA line is actually, has like $6,000 left on it, so it could come out of the FICA line.
You're okay. Okay, just making sure.
Well, that's good to know.
Yep. Not trying to make it any more difficult, just making sure we got everything in line.
So do you need a motion?
So just as an example, they all run, basically all runs from uh 954 dollars to the lowest to uh 17. Uh, I'm looking for it, cause my, when I printed it out, it got a little goofy here, but um 16, so about 1,600 is the highest. 1,700 would be the highest with that.
So we need a motion then to approve the spending of the Back the Blue Funds along with the, oh, just about 4,000, but the 55,005, Don? We need a motion for that then?
It's 55,005 dollars and 92 cents.
Which is the Back the Blue Funds and some, or from the FICA for this. Okay.
Mr. Chair, one quick question, just uh working with the, the understanding for, for the bonuses, um, is there a requirement within the state that if we're offering a bonus that they have to retain employment?
No, that, nothing that's been put out there, but it's always been talked about that you want to make sure that these individuals stay and that's why I wanna do this, I wanna award the individuals that have stayed.
Right.
And will stay, uh, a lot of these will stay, it's the, it's when you get to your zero to five officers, five-year officers is where you have your issues with uh retention on, on a lot of times. But, but I feel that uh with this, you should reward the people that have been here, that stay here and uh have uh dedicated their, their time to Morton County.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is if there's a need, again, not knowing state law on that piece of it, but as a bonus that's funded through the state, if they have to pay that back if they leave premature?
No, there is not.
Okay, just making sure we cover for them too.
Yeah. We talked about it, either have, you know, to sign the, you know, something from the sign, but it just still, still gotta be upheld, it's kinda, so being it's, it's not a great amount of money, you know, I mean, it, it's money and it, it helps uh by every means, but uh, I think this is the, the way to go right now and then, because it's a one-time deal.
Yeah. I see where you're going, Ray, cause I did have to sign something.
Right.
Yeah. Three years.
I think that so, the social services, what we gave those.
Yeah, it's the state.
That was, that was the state, yeah.
And the question comes.
And I don't, I don't really have a, I didn't have a, sorry.
It's tied to the grant.
Right, that's the question, if it's tied in with the grant or not.
It's not tied to the grant, that they have to send something.
Cause this is a grant versus.
Right.
Straight funding.
Yep. So uh, I really wouldn't have a, an issue with that, you know, but we'd have to find.
Yeah.
You know, but I, I think we just, at this point, we're good to go.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we authorize um sheriff's department the expenditure of 55,005 dollars and 92 cents for the purpose of uh law enforcement retention bonuses in accordance with Back the Blue Grants through the state of North Dakota.
That's okay.
All right, it's been moved to and seconded to authorize sheriff's department to pay 55,005 dollars and 92 cents to the, for the Back the Blue Funds grant along with the FICA payment. Uh, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Um, I'm gonna go roll call vote because there's some different funds here. Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmar?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion is approved.
All right, uh, thank you and all the deputies, thank you as well. So uh, with that, I have two other things I want to bring up real quick. One is that I know they were talking about portfolios uh tonight or just look at it, but there was, there was nothing on, I need a, uh, two members for the BMDC uh committee. Uh, there was only uh, Commissioner Morell is on there, so we need one other for that too, when that is.
Okay.
Uh, discussed, I'm guessing it would be, would be Paul, but we'll.
I asked for the list to be put on so we can start looking at it and thinking about what they wanna do. We won't do portfolios until January.
Okay, but I just seen that it was something to, remember, I seen it on there and it wasn't, that committee wasn't listed on there, so just make sure that we have.
BMDC.
Uh, then in one other incident I was gonna bring up is that we had an unfortunate accident where we crashed a squad car going through a call. That car was a 2023. Problem is, it, I didn't think, but it was totaled. Uh, and we, our insurance is actual cash value, uh, so they're gonna pay out, it's a 2023, about 20,000 miles on it, they're gonna pay out 34,900. That means I'm, a new car is 51, so I'm short to replace that car. And this is uh, that's the issue I have right now with, with insurance, so um, and trying to figure out how I can replace the vehicle because the other, the other budgeted um amounts for 2023 or 2024 spent and in 2025 is budgeted for cars, is what I'm saying. So I'm just trying to let you know that, or a way that I'm $20,000 short in a vehicle here, depending on how it works out.
Plus the installation of all the equipment.
Yeah, and, and I think they will pay that, I've been talking to Endur, and I think they will pay for the, 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 the parts, the, the whole front end was taken off the car, so um, and I'm just glad it was just the one vehicle and no one, I mean, it was a single vehicle, just our patrol car, no one else was involved. So uh, uh, with that, but they will, they will replace the parts that were damaged on the car and, and for the uh, the uninstall and the reinstalling a new one, I do believe.
Okay.
But that still puts me short the car at this point.
Chairman, Sheriff, I would say, I mean, you're not gonna get the car till next year, so I would say we just pay it out of your budget and if your budget happens to go over because of that, we know that, but usually your budget has enough wiggle room in it to probably cover that.
To cover that.
I wouldn't worry about it at this point till we get to end of next year.
So actually I have to order another whole extra car, but we'll have 34,000, well, 35 almost in insurance that'll come, come back to us or whatever, so. All right, I just wanna, to make you aware of where we're starting in that, just so, so we know, and then um, I also have the, the same issue on, on vehicles is that I, I have, at this year I actually have the vehicles, so in 2023, ordered vehicles, I didn't get them until 2024. 2024, I, I ordered vehicles, I have them, but ended 2024, but because of the cycle is, I don't have none of them on the road yet. So that pushes me back into 2025 again with uh, with a lot of the installs and the equipment and all this, and I don't know how we can get out of this cycle to, to, to resolve that here at one of these points, you know what I mean? But right now we're still in that and uh, I'll have most of the parks and stuff paid for, but there ain't gonna be, you know, the labor, the install, there's still gonna be some other additional costs that are gonna come in, into 2025 yet from 2024's budget, so uh, that's why I did send an email about asking for last year, uh, for the budget, but that would be another thing, uh, out of the room if we have to do another amendment or see where we're at this year because we're gonna have the same issue because a lot of my 2024 stuff was paid, I mean, 2023 stuff was paid out of 2024 and we're gonna be over in some, so I just wanna, so you're aware of what's going on.
And I don't have to worry about it till the year closes and if we go over in anything, then we have to make amendments, but if we don't go over, then we don't have to, so.
So we have to see where we're at?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm guessing we might be a little bit, but we'll, we'll see where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, Auditor, Sheriff, God Asset Forfeiture Phones we just talked about, why can't that cover it if needed?
Well, it could, uh, if we get into a bind, but we wanna make sure where we're at first, but.
But you said there was 70,000 dollars in there.
I do believe so, yeah.
It's um 81,000, I checked.
Eighty-one, yeah.
So.
We can only use.
Thirty-five a year, I think.
Thirty, thirty, thirty a year, I think.
Or is it 30?
Thirty, I think it's 30,000 a year.
But it still was there to take the sting off and let the bad guy pay for it.
Yeah, it all, uh, it all depends what our other needs are, but it's an option when we get to that point.
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, thank you.
Consider all options. Thank you, Sheriff. Don, you're up with the approval of sales tax ordinance.
Okay, so um, the state tax commissioner requires me to send documentation to them to uh start the 1% sales tax on April 1st and I have to notify them by the end of this quarter because you have to notify them uh one quarter in advance. So here is the ordinance, I just need a motion to approve and authorize myself and the chair to sign it and also to, I guess I have the suggested motion and it's just to have me start the, notify the tax commissioner's office to start the collection of the 1% sale, or 1 cent sales tax, which is 1%, yeah, which was approved by the qualified electors at the general election and then um, the chair and I will just sign the ordinance and I have to send this ordinance to them then.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to authorize Auditor Rown to notify a state tax commissioner, start collecting, start collections of the 1 cent sales tax, which was approved by majority vote of the qualified electors at the general election on November 5, 2024. And that this, just clarification that this tax does not have a sunset on it. This is in place.
Been moved and seconded, uh, the motion as stated by Commissioner Morell. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, my next item is liquor license renewals for next year and so the list is on the agenda here, we have Rusty's Saloon and Grill in St. Anthony, The Watering Hole in Fort Rice, um, The Post, which is just south of Mandan, um, and then Venue 25, which is just west of Mandan, and Huff Hills. And so the sheriff has signed off on all these and they have paid their um, application fee and so we just need approval of those renewals.
That was just the.
I'm not sure if this is all of them, this is what we had at this point.
There's, there's a couple others that usually apply.
Yeah, this is what has submitted to date, so.
I think the Glen Owens one that's missing.
Yeah, the one, yeah.
Yep. And you, everything was good, Sheriff?
Yes, no issues.
No issues at all, good. Okay, any questions, commissioners?
I move that we authorize the liquor license renewals for Rusty's Saloon in St. Anthony, The Watering Hole of Fort Rice, The Post, Mandan, Venue 25, Mandan, and Huff Hills ski area of Mandan.
Hold on a second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the liquor license renewals for the five listed uh establishments on our agenda. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Don?
Yep.
Commissioner Morell, we're on to your.
Yes, um, so this is a follow-up with the uh recent activity for the Morton County uh War Dead Monument. Uh, we had a public meeting, I don't remember the date on that one, but we had a public meeting here, uh, Commissioner Zachmyer himself also met with another group before that, uh, put together a survey, pushed it out as part of those public meetings as well as uh, um, anyone inquiring, because everything was pushed out through social media and on our website as well. So what this has, what I'm presenting here is just this tabulation, the, the summary of that public input documentation. Uh, we received 44 survey results. Of those 44 survey results, 37 of those, or 84% were residents of Morton County. Of those, uh, 37, two are from the Glen Owen area, 27 were from the Mandan area, two were from New Salem area, and six identified themselves as being rural Morton County. We did not have any that specifically identified themselves from Elmont, New Salem, or Flasher. I'm sorry, Elmont, Flasher, or Hebron.
Hebron, yep.
Yep. Um, those that ident, that stated that they have a family member rostered on the existing monument, there are six of the respondents. Um, those that are currently serving or have served, there were 15 of those 44 respondents, or 34%. And then the breakdown is accordingly for those that served in the Army, Marine Corps, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard, Space Force, or National Guard. Uh, veteran service organization member of those 15, 11 stated that they are members of a veteran service organization, whether it's the American Legion, the AMVETS, the, the DAV formerly known as uh Disabled American Veterans Organization, the Marine Corps League, the Navy League, uh, VFW, Vietnam Veteran Association, or any other type of veteran service organization. And again, that is just reflective of those 15 that identified as veterans. There's another questions or, or um, more so narrative questions that were petitioning for insight. Um, what elements of the existing monument do you like? Just the summary of all 44, uh, they like the location, they like the fact that it catches your attention when leaving the courthouse, uh, they like the fact that the names are recognized, it's, it's simple, um, it's a way to honor those who have died for their country, uh, they like the grass space, uh, and, and several more that are in there. Uh, what elements of the existing monuments do you not like? It does not attract a lot of attention and I've gotten that from a few people, just cause it blends in. Uh, it appears old, it appears congested, cold, uninviting, confined space, um, weather-worn, of course it's, it was built 1955, so yes, there's some, some elements with that. And again. And again, continuing on with, with those, um, those inputs. Then there was, uh, as we remember, there was two distinct concepts that were presented. One was the ellipse, which was a little bit of an oval egg shape. Uh, so what elements of the ellipse monument do you like? Uh, comments, everything. The space it creates, the rounded walls, the lighting, the abstract statue creates a feeling rather than being literal. It's inviting and incorporates the entire space, it draws attention. Um, the lighting shape, uh, and again, uh, drawing attention, opening, inviting, all of that is, is, uh, echoed in here several times over. Uh, and then what elements of the ellipse do you not like? Um, there's a couple of people that mentioned it was too grandiose, too austere. Um, the sculpture should be something a little bit more than, than the abstract that was, that was conceptualized. Uh, there was one comment about taken away from parking, as was also discussed at the presentation to the county commission initially, is that, that, um, element was actually removed, so the, the extension of Boulevard, so that's, that actually is not an accurate reflection of the current concepts. Um, and then again, as we remember, there is the other concept of the zigzag, which is basically, uh, a similar rendition of the existing monument. So what do you like of the zigzag monument? It's an upgrade to the current memorial and likely less expensive than the ellipse. Um, based on the, the architect's estimate, there is approximately, what, six thousand dollar difference between these two? Something along that line?
I don't remember.
It, as far as the initial concepts. Uh, it was simple, clean, respectful design, um, several comments on the shadows that were cast up on the, on the walls, uh, keeps with the original design and several other, uh, reflections given as far as what people like. Elements that they do not like with the zigzag, too similar of the current memorial. It feels stale, it's not inviting, no opportunity to sit, stand, or ponder the magnitude of service, uh, could be larger use, more space in the yard area, linear shadow wall, um, would be nice if flags be closer to soldiers' names, uh, and, and again, several other comments supporting the argument what they do not like. Basic question, if a statue were to be incorporated with the final design, would you prefer a lifelike statue or an abstract statue? There was seventy-three percent would prefer the lifelike statue. And next question was, on a scale of one to five, with one being the lowest and five being the highest, how important is incorporating the names of the Morton County service members killed in action into the final design? Again, one being the lowest, five being the highest, the average for all the respondents was four point nine five. So yes, there's very strong belief that the name should be incorporated. Thirty-eight responded with level of five, two responded level of four, there were zero responses for one, two, or three. On a scale of one to five, with one being the lowest and five being the highest, how important is incorporating existing landscape or hardscape into the final design? Again, the average response was three point two. Uh, eleven stated five, six stated four, ten stated three, six stated two, seven stated one. On a scale of one to five, with one being the lowest and five being the highest, how important is incorporating lighting or lighting accents into the final design? Again, five being the highest, we averaged four point three five. So very strong desire for incorporating lighting in the final design. Twenty-four respondents gave five. Nine respondents said four, uh, five respondents said three, one respondents said two, one responded said one. On a scale of one to five, with one being the lowest and five being the highest, how do you rate the ellipse concept, which again was that oval shaped? The average response was four point zero. So twenty-four said five points, um, three said four point, seven said three points, one said two points, five said one point. On a scale of one to five, with one being the lowest and five being the highest, how do you rate the zigzag con- concept? The average response was two point seven eight. Eight respondents said, gave five points, six gave four points, eight gave three points, seven gave two points, twelve gave one point. Should the final design concept, or should the final design incorporate more than one flagpole? Uh, this is actually kind of interesting, but fifty-five percent of the people said yes. And what I was thinking was, you know, maybe we incorporate all the branches of armed services. A thought. That's why I was going for that. If you had to choose a design concept today, which design concept would you choose? Sixty-one percent of the response said the elliptical, thirty-four percent said the zigzag. Should Morton County Commission dedicate funds for a new monument? Thirty-four percent said yes. I'm sorry, seventy-seven percent of the respondents said yes, thirty-four, thirty-four people. And then the question, the follow-on question for that, if yes, what do you consider a suitable amount? Um, a, a contribution of less than twenty-five percent, we had five respondents. Contribution of twenty-five percent, ten respondents. Contribution of fifty percent, fifteen respondents, or forty-four percent. Contribution of seventy-five percent, one respondent, contribution of one hundred percent, two respondents. And then we also had a question on there as far as inviting anyone that wanted to serve on an advisory committee to further finalize the design concept and support fundraising needs, and we had twelve people come forward. Was it twelve, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen? It's actually thirteen people, one didn't put their name on the form. Um, that came forward and offered to be part of a, a committee that would support that. So the, the overall findings on this, I, I did share this with, um, uh, the architects, uh, both Alfitt, Alfitter and Jake Axman, and they really appreciated the input that was gleaned from the survey. It really helped them, uh, for any future considerations. Uh, as far as the, the committee, it is my suggestion that if we want to pursue, uh, a final design, that as, as I've mentioned before, this needs to come from the veterans themselves, it cannot come from this body. We, we take their input and, and this body makes the final decision, but the design and all that needs to come from the veterans themselves. So it's, it's my suggestion, um, and I'm definitely open it up for discussion, but that a committee does get established to continue the development, to solidify a final design, to identify costs, to develop a, a fundraising strategy, and if this commission decides to move forward with it, that committee executes the funding, uh, fundraising strategy. They work with the construction, the overall construction of the project, they work with the final dedication, and, um, that's where I feel that the committee would need to go. So with that, I throw out the rest of the commission for conversation.
Any comments from anybody? I was a little surprised at the fifty percent funding coming from the county.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not surprised at including more flags or any of that stuff, that's.
Yeah.
Not at all, but the funding coming from the county side.
On, on, on the same, on the same timeframe where there's citizens that are, that are questioning government expenditures.
Yeah.
So I, I agree, that was, that was interesting.
And granted, it, you know, the, the group that you polled has a, has an interest in this. So if we went to the entire county, we might get a different response on the funding levels.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the, the forty-four responses that we did get, I thought that was, that was good success for that sense. And, and the, the measure of those that are descendants of names on the wall, I thought that was nice, as well as those that, that are willing to step forward.
Coming out of this, if it does get approved, uh, that the committee wouldn't take it away that, uh, well, we only have to gather fifty percent of the funding.
Correct. Correct. I guess if, adding more context to it or, or thought into it, if this commission wishes to proceed, it'd be my, my suggestion that we develop a seven-person committee. Now, I balance now whether it be five or seven, or, you know, you get too many, you just get too many. But, uh, a seven-person committee, and coincidentally, seven of those thirteen respondents that that expressed interest, seven of them are veterans and members of, uh, strong representation of the veteran service organizations and also show representation across a goods chunk of Morton County. So there's good representation in that sense. But, uh, that, again, that's coincidental, but a seven-member committee, that I would also recommend that Commissioner Zach Meyer and myself also be a part of that. I would ask, take the lead on that committee, uh, working through, mainly because of my knowledge with construction, with planning, um, keeping things on task. Um, but again, emphasizing that that committee, uh, the specific task, because they need to have clear parameters what their job is, is to work with the architect, flush out a suggested final design with detail and architect's cost, a cost estimate. The final design would still come back to the commission for, for consideration. That committee would also develop the fundraising strategy for the final design based on the architect's cost estimates, so yes, not, not factoring any discounts or any of that nature, based on overall cost estimates. Uh, pending the final authorization by the county commission, that committee would execute the fundraising measures for the successful erection of the approved monument. Uh, pending final authorization of the county commission, the committee would work with the authorized architects to solicit bids for the final design and bring the recommendation to the commission for final consideration prior to any bids being awarded. So again, everything's being holistically applied within that committee. Um, where am I at here? The committee would work with the architect for the successful construction of the approved final design, meaning they would oversee the actual construction, follow it through to the end. The committee would coordinate a final dedication of the approved monument. And I would actually take it further with, that committee would also work, knowing that there's that strong desire as far as the names, whatever comes into the names, if that comes into the final design, that committee works with the developing policies for placement of those names for the future. And then for those, uh, every person that expressed an interest, I did reach out to them independently to confirm their interest, and every single one of them confirmed their interest to serve on this committee. But to identify the, the seven veterans specifically, uh, Todd Porter, who's, comes out of Mandan, of course, he is a descendant of a name on the wall. Scott Stevens, who is an Army veteran, um, he does have connections with the Flasher territory as well as Mandan. Larry McClellan, who is an Army veteran, lives here in Mandan. Nicole Bickford Frelick, she is Army and National Guard, uh, she lives in Mandan but also has strong connections in the New Salem area. Glenn Reed, Marine Corps veteran, lives in Mandan. Gary Goroski, a Navy veteran, living in Mandan. Stacy Bendish, Navy veteran, living in Mandan but also has strong connections in the Fort Rice area. So that'd be my suggestion is having those, those seven to be on that committee. But in the same token, um, we don't have, we as a county do not have any formal agreement in place with the architects. And not that we're authorizing them to proceed with final construction, but we would need to hit, just make sure we're transparent, we would need some level of an agreement for the concept, for moving forward with a concept design, knowing that if there's costs associated, associated with our time on that, that would be applied with the final, um, if it were to be approved, be applied with final costs for the final design and construction.
Any questions, comments?
Would you want that in a motion?
No. Ms. Chairman, my only, uh, thoughts or comments, uh, right now the two designs overall are well-received by everybody. Uh, one of the things I've took away from the meetings that I've been to is, they want this monument to be living, where it's interactive. The current zigzag wall, you can't walk through it, can't walk around it, and it's almost a barrier to visiting the names or reflecting on what is there. The elliptical appears to be the most favorite, mainly because of its open airingness and the fact that you can walk around it, you can reflect upon it. It'll be very easy, you know, sadly, when there's future wars, to add names on the other side, and then all the names would be equal. Where our current monument with the zigzag, if you start putting names on the other side, it, it, it's cold on that side, it's, it, there's no warmth, there's no embrace of the sacrifice that is depicted. If it is open, and you can even use the zigzag, what some of them have said is, if the zigzag was used because it's a tribute to what the World War I, World War II, and Korean, uh, veterans built with their own money and their own fundraising, you could still spread it apart and have the walls in a zigzag pattern, but an opening to walk through them, so that you can see the other side and see the other side equally to the side that was facing the courthouse. All of that can be done with a committee and you're going to have to have a committee. Uh, with seven members, two county commissioners formally assigned, that committee, every time it meets, it's going to have to be a public meeting and publicly noticed because now it's a subcommittee and two county commissioners assigned to it. Got a, got a, it would have to be publicly noticed, which is fine, that's just a minor
Should be.
Deal, that, that, there's no problem with that. I would like to see the committee formed and get started on the work, not only on the design, but start having ideas for fundraisers.
Does anybody have anything else? I'm sure Commissioner Morrell has a motion ready.
Before, before, uh, Commissioner Morrell makes a motion, I just want to get it in the, memorialize it that there is a need for this. I know it's been talked about in prior meetings. I know it's been talked about in prior meetings, but the current memorial is falling apart, damaged, and there is a need to do something different.
It's been damaged for a while.
Yeah.
That continues. Mr. Chair, I move that we establish a seven-person committee to be comprised of names that have previously mentioned, in addition to Commissioner Zachmeyer and myself, and also that the committee be authorized to work with the architect, flesh out final design, to develop fundraising strategy for the final design, to work with county commission for final approval and execution, to oversee the overall construction of the final design, to execute actual fundraising needs to support the final design, and to work with a final dedication once it's ready for unveiling to the public, and also to develop the policies if names are incorporated on the wall, or on the final design, if names are incorporated on the final design, that they also would develop the policies for future names. And that they, once they meet, finalize a final concept, working with the respective architects, that they bring it back to this commission for future action.
Are you going to repeat that?
I'm not.
Yes. They'll have a second motion after that, too. So that's the first one.
As long as you have it written out to give to Belinda for the minutes.
Yeah, because it's going to even be hard for her to get it off the video. So I'll second Commissioner Morell's first motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion as stated by Commissioner Morell. Is there any further discussion?
Ms. Chairman, I think that this board should leave the names, because the way that's written now, the names could be removed. I believe that's going to be a mistake, and it is going to anger families of the descendants that are currently named on that wall. The one thing that is different from ours compared to any other one in the state is it honors our war dead. To remove the names and go and not have the names anywhere on there, especially since some of them are missing in action or buried in foreign cemeteries, this is the only monument those family members will have to visit something in their hometown or their home county and see their name. It's like a cemetery, and removing the names, I think, is a grave error. And that would be my only concern with this motion.
Do you want to make that an amendment to keep the names on the wall?
I think that we need to keep the names on the wall, but we have a standing motion now.
You can amend it.
I think it should be amended. I think the names need to stay.
Mr. Chair, if I can add to the sentiment, I wholeheartedly agree. However, we don't know what the final design is going to be. However, adding to that, again, going off the respondents, 86% said leave the names on.
I think we need to leave the names on, and that decision needs to be made immediately.
Amend it.
I think it should be amended.
Or I can just strike that statement if be willing to.
Friendly.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. We'll strike that.
Yeah, we'll just strike that piece of it.
Okay. As long as everybody's in, Jackie's in agreement.
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Back to the motion as was stated with that statement struck. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And then a follow-on motion, Mr. Chair, would be, again, as it stated, is we don't have any formal relationship with Alfred or Architecture or Jake Axeman, AGL Architecture, so I would motion to authorize this committee to work with the respective architects, Alfred or Architect and AGL Architects, to move forward on a proposed final design for a renewed monument for the Morton County War Dead.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to have the committee work with Alfred or Architect for the final concept and design. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Commissioner Morell?
Move forward with due diligence and honor.
Okay. Auditor Roan had to leave us, but the only thing left on our agenda was the portfolios, and I asked him to be put on so that we could start thinking about what we're going to do in January. Just take a look at him, see who's got what. I do notice Jackie and I have one that didn't get straightened out. She has the State's Attorney and I have the Morton Mandan Public Library. Those two got flipped. And then BMDC is missing for.
Well, there's a couple others with that Ron and I had swapped also that weren't corrected on that roster, so.
Which ones? So we know.
It was the Council of the Aging, which is on his and mine.
Oh.
And Housing Task Force, or I'm sorry, the Housing. I got my.
Mr. Chairman, I thought Council of the Aging was one commissioner.
Yeah, it should have been one.
Right, right. But he and I swapped. I had Housing, he had Council of the Aging. I went to them, and we struck good relationships, so we just swapped that. That's not reflected.
So Housing is on, would be on that, on what Commissioner Lang.
Correct.
What's it called officially? Do you remember?
Morton County Housing Authority.
So Council on the Aging would be scratched there. Morton County Housing Authority. Okay. Are there any other corrections that anybody notices right off the bat? Going to add BMDC to both of those, the Burley Morton Detention Center. Should be on both of them. Okay. At this time, there's nothing, that should be correct then? Yours are correct.
Yep.
Mr. Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And as I was working with bills with Commissioner Tocash last night, I mentioned that I have legislation, but that is, with what's going to be happening at the legislature this year, it might be listed as my portfolio and people can send stuff my way. It's for everybody. If you have something you're following, follow it. Keep your ears to the ground, because this is going to be a busy year, and what's going to happen over there is going to affect us. So we all need to pay attention to what's going on.
Let's share one other comment for one of mine is sheriff is listed just sheriff, but that should be sheriff and judicial.
Okay. Anything else anybody noticed? Okay. So like I said, we have a corrected list, just kind of start thinking about where we're at, and we'll go from there in January, we'll figure that out. Does anybody else have anything good for the order? Seeing none?
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
It is, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned.